And I want to welcome each of you to the October work session of the School Board of Oconee County. Just appreciate you being here. And as we start all of our meetings, I ask you if you would like to join us in a moment of silence as we begin. Amen. And now if you'll stand with me as we say the pledge to allegiance, please. Attention, salute pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Each of you have received a copy of tonight's agenda for the October 11th work session meeting. Did anybody have any changes, additions? All right, then it will stand approved as presented. And Mrs. Baye, are there any speakers for public comment tonight?
No, ma'am.
All right. So we will get right into our meeting with our first discussion item, which is Dr. Michael Thorson and his superintendent's report for us.
Just a quick update. I had the opportunity about a week and a half ago to go to a brand reopening, I guess, at Borg Warner. And I just wanted to, they thanked a lot of the community groups and agencies, other businesses that had helped them out. Of course, after the tornado that blew through Seneca last year, they did give a little token of appreciation I wanted to show you. I probably should either put this in maintenance or Seneca High because most of our folks that did the heavy lifting and helping that, well, transportation's another one. So we had, I guess, a school and two different groups that helped them an awful lot. But it was good to see the rebuilt plant and hear a little bit about how they have stuck with it and stayed in Oconee County, which is good for us. Of course, we want to see thriving businesses in our community. So that was good. I also wanted to just touch base and give you a quick update about free introduced lunch. Because of COVID, the federal government has continued this entire school year to give all students free lunch. And free, I guess, free breakfast and free lunch. So one thing we've noticed is it has reduced the number of free and reduced lunch applications that we've got. Because I guess families, well, I feel out of form, my kids eat free anyway. And that is true from the family's perspective, but it could have effect on us in that if it lowers the number of students who are officially classified as free introduced lunch, it will affect federal funding for us. It could also affect the ranking of our schools. We've typically done three or four elementary schools as Title I elementary schools. And we do that based on the percent poverty in each school, which is related to free introduced lunch. So depending on which forms get put back, it could change. You know, we've had, historically, we've had Jameson Brown, Blue Ridge Elementary, and right now we have Orchard Park and Westminster Elementary. It was just three. We picked up Westminster to be a fourth. But the order of those, those are our four most impoverished elementary schools. That could change. So just going to let you know, we have asked the elementary principals to do a push to get applications in and with an explanation of just, here's why we need you to fill the form out. It's still important, even though it's not going to change your child's meal status for the year, because everybody's getting the free meals. And we're going to talk to the middle and high school principals about that on Wednesday as well. So just a quick update about that.
Mike, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Since that is a federal regulation and a federal decision, is it not a possibility that they should waive that rule for us, at least for a year or two until we get back to track?
I would love to think it would work that way. Things that make sense are always...
To us, it's more like a business to the federal government.
Sometimes. I do think this is going to be a concern for several school districts, probably across the state and maybe even the nation. So we'll see. But right now, it's still important for us to try to get those applications turned in. So we're going to do a push over the next few weeks to try to get those in and see if we can't get our... Theoretically, our percentages shouldn't have gone down over COVID. If anything, COVID probably would have added a few. So we're going to try to get our numbers back to what they have been in years past, at least. And then finally, just another quick update on our COVID numbers. Ms. Baye's going to pull that up. But you can see, numbers still going in a positive direction. So that first graph there that she's got pulled up is the state and dropped 72% since the statewide high on September 4th. So that's good news. And then she can scroll down. The Oconee numbers are even better. High on August 30th of 119, we're down 74% to the seven-day average is now 30.7. And then we're also seeing, as the third little chart here, numbers continue to drop within the school district as well. So you can see here, as far as the daily count of individuals out of school, we're down to in the 30s as of today. So we're excited that numbers continue to drop. And we do plan to start, nothing major, but we're going to start rolling back some of our precautions. I'll give you a good example. Elementary schools haven't been doing any field trips. Well, Jameson Brown is going to start swim lessons at the YMCA tomorrow. So we're going to open up some, a few field trips. The principals are going to have a little more leeway on visitors coming in the building. We're still not going to have, you know, people just coming in and eating lunch with their kids and, you know, not completely opened up. But essential visitor, that definition may grow a little bit for principals. So anyway, just going to start that, see how things go, continue to monitor cases and hope that they continue to go down. But things are getting better day by day, which is good news. So we're happy to listen. If you've heard any concerns, but we do think it's time. We've been planning swim lessons for several years now. We're ready to get that kicked off, and we think that'll be positive. And so if you want some excitement tomorrow, you show up at the YMCA at 11 o'clock, and you'll see a bunch of third graders jumping in the pool very, very excitedly. So we're looking forward to that. And we have a schedule. I do want to brag on the YMCA. They have embraced this third grade swim program. And Mr. Hamby and I met with them a couple of weeks ago. And the work they've done, they've secured goggles for all of our third graders so they'll be able to swim and not worry about getting chlorine in their eyes, that kind of thing. They've just done a lot of work to be prepared for our students, which was one of the reasons that the board several years ago voted to support the YMCA financially as far as building the facility. They are definitely holding up to their end of the bargain. We had a swim team compete Saturday, and then the boys competed, girls competed Saturday, boys competed today. And we have a swim team because we have a YMCA. And now, starting tomorrow, the other part to that is third grade swim lessons. So very excited about that. And anyway, a quick update.
That's all good things. And I'm so glad that we could do so much with Borg Warner during that time. That's really, that's a great, great way that we have served our community. So that's nice to be acknowledged. All right, Mrs. Moore, you've got the next couple of things for, starting with the financial report.
So you all got the report in your packet, and I'd be happy to take any questions. I've been really outstanding on the funding expenditures, on the check reports. A lot of those bigger, most of those bigger expenditures are from our SRF lines, the instructional materials and technology that we purchased, and the XJC replacements in Seneca.
Did anybody have any specific questions on the financial report that you got?
The only thing that I was curious about was the Dorchester II expenditure.
When we have students from our district that go to another district, we pay that district on a per day basis for instruction. And they do the same for us. We have students that go to another district.
Okay. Good question. Anybody else have any questions on anything?
Gloria, does that balance out pretty good? I know there was, there was a time when we paid our bill on that, but there was a lot of districts that would not. So that's been a while back.
Districts pay when we bill them?
Do it.
I tend to think we pay more than we get back, but maybe because more of our students are going, you know, coming up here.
Or maybe they just are not acknowledging the fact that they lost.
True. Okay. So the next thing is, we have in your packet, the law got passed this legislative session, and says that districts who have teachers who teach dual modality, which is virtual and in-person at the same time, that districts have to compensate them separately, has to be above their regular salary. So we, as a leadership team, have been talking about how we might do that. And our first thought was that we would pay all teachers, all classroom teachers. But then on second thought, reflection, we've determined a way that we can kind of track who is actually doing that, who, how many teachers have both in-person and virtual students, and that would provide us with some accountability, who's actually doing it, who's not. Save us a lot of money, we think. So next week, we'd like for you all to talk to us, to give us permission to gather that information, pay where certain things are top of our pay. That's it with you all. We would pay once in November and once in May. We gather the information for this first semester, pay anybody that's already had a class with dual modality, we pay them in November. And we do collect that information again at the end of the year. So and then pay out again in May for any additional ones. We don't, you only get paid once, we're only going to pay them one amount. So if they do it in the first semester, they would not get another payment. If they don't do it in the first semester, you get it in the second semester, then we pay again in May.
So it's like a one-time stipend, is it?
It is. And that's consistent with what a lot of other school districts are doing because it's very difficult to kind of figure this out. It's, in some ways, it's kind of ironic that we're paying for dual modality. Of course, this is in response to the quarantines. Not sure what's playing that day.
But anyway. In a lot of ways, dual modality was easier for teachers because if several students in a classroom were quarantined, we, of course, were looking for ways to keep those students up to date with their lessons and their homework and all while they were at home. And one of the easiest ways to do that was to simply turn your computer on, establish a Google Meet, which is kind of a Zoom call that we use, the Google flavor of a Zoom call. The teachers would just let that play during the classroom. So a student that was sitting at home with an internet connection could log into the Google Meet. They could at least hear what was going on in the classroom, hear the instruction. But that qualifies as dual modality teaching. So the state law says we have to pay teachers additional for that. But the funny thing is, if we told teachers, don't do that, it would have been a lot harder for the teachers because then they would have had to do paper packets and things like that. So it's kind of like the easier, the easier way to help students keep up is what required the additional pay. So anyway, but we're, of course, wanting to be, follow the instructions of the legislature. And we feel like we've got a good plan for that. But it is going to be six figures. So we would like for y'all to kind of approve our idea next week during the regular board meeting.
Anybody have any questions about that?
Will y'all have a final, I guess, total or a guesstimate or?
We're, we could give you a really rough estimate, but 500, we have 850 teachers.
I've calculated that it'd be about 800 actual classroom teachers. So we're looking at five and a quarter.
If they all did it. Because it's 500 plus the associated fringe with that. So that's why it would be. So we're talking a half a million dollars. But there are certain groups of teachers that it's very unlikely that they would have done the dual modality teaching. So basically, we're going to inform all of our teaching staff that here's the law, here's what it says. If you've done this, just, you know, answer a couple of questions, get your principal to sign off on it, turn your name in.
But we won't know by next week.
So we won't have a, I mean, we can give you a ballpark estimate of what we think, but it won't be, we won't know until we've done that survey questionnaire.
Any other questions? All right. We have Greg Bibb and John Arnold here that are going to go over our state test data.
I'm here to present summary of statewide assessment that we did last spring. May be guilty of overdoing it a little bit, but I know how much Mr. Harry enjoys this kind of thing. So. Wanted to give you lots of, lots of data. And I'll take a side road here in a minute or two and tell you a little bit about all those files you got from Ms. Baye, courtesy of me. But the data itself, I think we've summarized it so it's pretty easy to interpret. In general, you're going to see the same pattern over and over. You're going to see a series of three bar graphs. The first one's us, Oconee School District. The second one's the state. The third one is the 10th best performance in reference to our goal to be a top 10. So let's start out with SC Ready from last spring, ELA in math. We give that to grades three through eight. So you see the, a series of bars, three bars at each grade level, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And then you will see, as I was just explaining, the first bar, the blue one, that's us. The red one is the state. The, whatever color that may be, some kind of teal green is the top 10 performance. That changes every time you change to another set of bars. In other words, that's not just one school district I focused in on. We ranked it each time to see what was, what was the 10th best every time we changed to another cluster of bars. So the, the actual numbers are the percent of students who scored met or above on the test. Then this is...
Greg, can you go back one, just go back to that real quick?
Yeah.
So grade eight math, we would have been, we were the 10th. So that would be a case where we didn't meet the goal of being the top 10 performer.
Well, it looks like, starting from the third grade right on up, that we improved a little bit every year. Is that right? Well, except for the fourth grade. And then fifth grade, we came back up above the state on Tuesday.
See, I knew that you wanted to dive right in there. You're exactly right. The, if you look at the relative hikes, then there is that catch-up by the time we get to the grade eight. You're right. So this is math. This is ELA. Again, by grade, us, the state, top 10. Then we move on to, it's, science is not given in three through eight anymore. It's only given in grades four and six. So that's why you see a lot of white space there. But again, it's the same, same concept. And maybe this would be a time when I could just kind of take a little side road here real quick, and then we'll go back to the graph. Yeah. So there's a graph after graph after graph here. What is it we're doing? The way the data was released by the state, we were able to segment it out by all these different subgroups. So the title you see, if you look up there at the top, it says demo ID equals 01 all. It's kind of jargon, but anyway, that just means that's everybody all. And then if we go down to the second one, just to give you an idea for how this changes, the second one says 02M males. Then it'll go to females. So you say, well, how could I remember all that? Well, you don't have to. That's why I sent an Excel sheet as well. Looks a little overwhelming, I know. But that, there is the charts that tell you what those represent. So the first one over there, SC Ready, it goes down through what's 01, what's 02, what's 03. And it's broken down by demographics, ethnicity, students with disabilities, GT, all kinds of breakdown. Okay, now can we go back to our presentation here? And I'll go to the next assessment program, which is end of course. These are the, the tests students take in those particular subjects at the end of the course. They receive a grade, just like a teacher-made test, from zero to 100. We looked at it two ways here. What, the first one we did was the percent of students who passed the test, A, B, C, D, F. So 66.19% of our students passed the algebra test, which was better than the state average, red bar, not quite at the top 10, green bar. And the one thing that kind of stands out there is English everywhere. We then did it a second way, and that is, Dr. Thorson said, well, what about the average score? So we took the average score of each. That's the second slide here. And so, let's talk about English again, if you will. And I did something I shouldn't have done right then. Did you go back to, I was just going to, yeah. So Oconee, the average English score was 76.69 compared to the state, 76.54, just barely behind the number 10 district. I gave myself seven and a half minutes. I got 37 seconds. Okay. But you, let's see, what's, access, this is the test that the feds say we give to what we call our English language learners, ESOL. They're sometimes referred to. Now there, there's some testing programs refer to them as multi-language learners. This one, because the numbers are so small, if you divide it by grade, it's a K through 12. So if we sliced it by grade, the numbers would be so small that it would start to lose its meaning. That's why this is, oh, got to go. That's why we combined them into just one. And then I think this is my last one. We have a career and Ready Test called Ready to Work by the Wynn Learning Company, given to students in their third year of high school, which is juniors, but it could be student graduating early. If it's their third year in high school, they take it. And this company did not want to dissect the data quite as much as the others. So we didn't get all the nice subgroups. All we pretty much have is this, blue is us, red is the state, and there's the top 10. So this is the percent of students earning a silver, gold, or platinum certificate. Did pretty well, huh? And then this one is, I just brought in each high school. So there's four blue bars, Seneca High, West Oak, Wahala, the district still. So you can see it very well. And it's now time for Mr. Arnold, Dr. Arnold. Thank you.
I was told to keep this short. I wasn't told seven and a half minutes. So I'll do my best. So all of this data is wonderful, but you have to do something with it in order to have really made use of it, to have not wasted our time, not wasted our students' time. You have to do something with it. So that's what we're going to talk about, is how we're going to use data to improve student outcomes. Data literacy is where that begins. It's the first prerequisite to being able to use the data to then improve student outcomes. So what is data literacy? What does that mean? There's a group called the Data Quality Campaign. It's a nonprofit, nonpartisan group that was founded in 2005. And they have put together what they believe is a pretty clear definition or explanation of what it means to be data literate. Educators who are data literate continuously, effectively, and ethically access, interpret, act on, and communicate multiple types of data from state, local, classroom, and other sources to improve outcomes for students. That's a, that's a pretty big mouthful for saying we're using our data. We're using all types of data. We're using it continuously to help improve the outcomes for students. Okay, thank you. Recognizing the need to further develop the data literacy of our educators, district leadership sought a framework that would facilitate this development. They selected the DataWise Process. DataWise Process is a project of the Harvard Graduate School of Education. They first started their work and organized in 1996, but they didn't actually publish their work until 2013. So it's been a while. And when they did, we got our hands a hold of it and really started digging into it. And it became our map for our data literacy journey. Now their DataWise Process is divided into three phases. The first phase is to prepare, then to inquire, and then to act. Each of those three phases is then further broken into additional steps. And one of the things that you'll notice about this, if you look at the shape of their little logo, their icon there, it's a, it's a continuous spiral. You get to the eighth step, and it takes you right back around to the third step. So this is going to be an ongoing process, something that the district will continue to do for a long time to come. District leadership first introduced the DataWise Process in the 2019-2020 school year. It was introduced with a book study for our administrators. They formally launched this journey the following year. And despite the obstacles presented by the pandemic, they really made remarkable progress. During their prepare phase, that first phase, the district and school organized collaborative work by establishing data teams. These teams were composed of administrators, teachers, psychologists, and other professionals. They reserved time to meet periodically and worked collaboratively. They reserved time to meet periodically and work collaboratively. They set up expectations and established norms for their meetings, and they began to put together their inventories of the various types of datas that were available to them and building inventories of the instructional strategies and initiatives that were being implemented in our buildings. District and school leaders also began building assessment literacy. Now assessment literacy is a part of overall data literacy. Assessment literacy is understanding concepts like sampling, reliability, validity, measurement error, these kinds of concepts. It also requires an understanding of, for example, norm reference tests versus criterion reference tests. It requires the ability to understand an individual student's report, but also to examine group assessments and make appropriate comparisons cohort versus longitudinal. So all of that is part of being assessment literate. During the inquiry phase, district and school administrators worked to create a data overview. Now the charts that Dr. Bibb just showed with you, that's an example of a data overview. It's putting together these graphic displays of the results of our assessments. And what this does is it allows us to narrow the inquiry and begin to identify focus areas. And this is done by analyzing the test score reports to find and draw attention to critical comparisons, comparing the performance of various subgroups of students, and by displaying these trends. Digging into student data involved triangulation of data sources, developing shared understandings of knowledge and skills that students need, and articulating a learner-centered problem, what are the problems that our learners are experiencing so that we can address them? And then challenging assumptions. And then finally, district and school administrators began examining the instruction that was happening in our schools by looking at what teachers were doing, what teachers were not doing, and by developing their own skills in classroom observation. Just like participants in a marathon will maintain a different pace throughout the race and eventually finish at different times, our schools are going to move through this process at different paces and get to different points at different times. It's a journey. This is one reason that we began this year, 2122, by going back and revisiting the first two phases to find out what progress we had made and where we needed to support our schools. Ms. Simmons and I are in the process of visiting each of our schools individually and talking with the administration to find out where they are and how we can support them. At the same time, we're going to begin moving into the final phase of the Data Wise Process. And during the act phase, schools will be deciding on the appropriate instructional strategies to bring about the desired outcomes for our students. They'll be developing a common vision of what it looks like to implement those strategies, and they're putting those plans into writing by assigning responsibilities and timelines. They will also develop plans for how to assess their progress. So as we begin working on these plans and actually putting it into implementation, we need to know if they're working, so they'll assess their progress. This will use a combination of short-term, intermediate, and long-term data, and will include different goals along the way. And then in the final step, our teachers and administrators will actually enact those plans, and they will assess them as we go. And that's going to require a clearly communicated plan that's integrated into the ongoing work of the school. School and district teams will provide support and internal accountability. Teachers and administrators will evaluate what's working and what's not. They will celebrate successes along the way and make course corrections as needed. Of course, the last step is not really the final step. As I said earlier, it's an ongoing journey, and as new data becomes available, our data overview will be updated. We'll need to get in and dig into that data again and see how that affects our plans. That will lead to updated action plans and plans to assess our progress, and so on, and so on. So again, as you can see, it's a journey and not a destination. And that concludes our presentation, and Dr. Bibb and I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think he ran out on you.
I'll talk to him about that tomorrow. I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
What does the timeline of such as this look like? Is it, we must...
You know, there's actually been research into the implementation of these types of large-scale reforms, and it's actually, it typically takes organizations multiple years to actually begin to develop the implementation, the planning, everything that goes into it. When you've got an organization of, you know, the eight hundred-plus teachers, it takes time to get all of them involved, and this does have to get down to the, to the classroom level. So we're, I almost hate to count last year because, because of the pandemic, and, but they did make progress. They, you know, from, from what I've been able to gather from conversations I've had with teachers and administrators, they did make progress last year. But this is something that's going to continue. I think it's, it's going to become part of our vocabulary as a district, part of our culture and what we do. But it's going to take a little, it's going to take time, probably two to three years before it's ingrained and second nature.
I know in the past we've been using data in the schools. So is this a new program that's kind of just growing what we've been doing, or?
Well, like, um, Dr. Arnold shared, it's putting more of our data in action. You can look at data all day long, but until you actually analyze it to the point where you're creating an action plan based on the needs that you have, um, you can't make progress if you don't put it into action. And so, um, with the state mandate, moving forward with the MTSS that we've talked some about, with you all, you know, we're required to know and understand where our students are performing and be able to intervene where we need to, to help them make progress. And so the Data Wise Journey allows us to be able to get into like a protocol-type mindset, hey, we've got data here, then we get it again here, you know? We're not just one and done looking at it and, okay, this is how we did, but what are we doing to make improvements? And going through the process of that good, effective data analysis. And it allows us, like, I feel like, um, since I've been in this role, um, it's really allowed us to be able to make good curriculum choices, like we talked about with the SR funding, all of the data analysis that we've done, because our district data team goes through the same process with district-wide data. And so we've been able to make some good, sound instructional database decisions, um, which is what we want our schools to be doing. So we're not modeling it from up here. It's really hard, you know, if we're asking them to do something, we want them doing the same thing. So everything, like Dr. Arnold said, should be based on assumptions, should be based on data. And when we're looking at trend data over time, that's when we can really start seeing what areas we need to make some improvements with. So we're excited, the schools have done a great job, um, enjoy visiting them. This year was even easier for them to start the process because we did it, we did it last year, we didn't, um, lose a ton of ground on that because of the pandemic, um, because all our decisions should lie in how our students are performing and we need to be sure we're meeting their needs.
Anyone else have questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here tonight. A lot to think about.
This may be the first time you've met Mr. Dr. Arnold.
Yeah.
But, uh, just one of those situations where guy kind of opened a door. We had a vacancy, um, in the position when Ms. Smith went to Westminster Elementary, and Dr. Arnold did very, very similar job to what he's doing with us down in Richland, too, and he was relocating to the upstate, so it was just kind of like he fell in our lap and, um, has been a very, very good addition to our staff, so we're excited to have him here.
Great place to land.
We welcome you to clatch your hair. All right, and Mrs. Simmons, you have some policies for us tonight.
Yes, I do. Um, the first one is our graduation requirements policy, and just a couple of changes on this one. At the top, the table for the unit requirements, um, marching band has been added to PE and our junior ROTC. However, we do not offer marching band as like a PE credit in the school district, but underneath the table there, you can say if we did receive a student to transfer in where their district had been approved, to offer the marching band, um, for the PE credit, we would accept that credit. And then the other thing under the table there is we've made a lot of changes as a state with the computer science requirement. So they are officially stating here that keyboarding can no longer be substituted for the one half of the computer science requirement for incoming freshmen in the eighteen, nineteen school year. So they put that in policy. That seems to be a common question that keeps being asked for people who are transferring in, so it's nice that they've added that to the policy. Then under adult education, that same statement for keyboarding is there. So when students are going to adult ed, um, they are required to have the same computer science, new computer science requirements as, um, our high school students need to have as well. And then on the last page, under high school credit for college work, um, the company that does the accreditation process was called Advanced Ed, and their name has changed to Cognia, so we've just made that change in the policy. Those are the only minor changes to the graduation requirements policy. All right, I'm going to move on to the grading assessment system. We've had no changes in our grading scales and no changes in the state uniform grading scale as well for grades nine through 12. Um, when you get to the conversion process of the policy, if you go on to page four, at the very end there, it just talks about how when we get a student who transfers into the school district, and it could be through, um, a private school, an out-of-state, non-public school, a non-accredited school, um, a homeschool association, that we can ask the parents and guardians to, um, produce some evidence of what their curriculum was like that they used in those locations prior to awarding credit to the student on their transcript. And we've been doing a lot of that, um, and our counselors at the high school level are very good about knowing what we need from parents. We review a lot of core syllabi and lesson plans, assessments, things like that, to determine, especially at honors level classes, you know, making sure we're making the right recommendations for those credit transfers. So that's what that section talks about. No changes in end-of-course testing or in honors courses. Um, under transfer credits, this, or excuse me, transfer courses, that second paragraph actually doesn't need to be crossed out, so that will make no changes to that section of under transfer courses. And again, um, where it was crossed out is just talking a little bit about, um, same things with homeschools and non-accredited private schools, if they need to have, um, for us to be able to give them credit for some prerequisite courses that might be at the honors level, if we don't have enough documentation, if they take the next level class, then we can go back and, um, give them, award them credit for that. So there's really no changes in that, in that area. Going down to dual-credit courses, um, the top part that's been crossed out really talks about removing that articulation agreement that we have to have in place right now if we're making agreements, um, for other classes that high school students could take at post-secondary institutions. So they're going to say that we're allowed to remove that, and that opens up some of those doors for our high school students to take classes in other places, as long as they have, um, permission from their homeschool, um, to do that. All right? And then there's no, um, changes in the GPA or course withdrawals, and then the rest of the policy stands as it is.
Anybody have any questions on that one?
And then our last one is social studies education. I'm just going to move down to, um, what is in red here, and it's just talking about that our district's instructional program, um, is just designed for our students to acquire that content, um, in concepts knowledge, really develop those critical thinking skills, and just by achieving that college and career readiness through the social studies education in their classrooms where they're analyzing historical evidence, evaluating it, and then demonstrating their understanding of that evidence. So is our hope in our schools that we're exposing students to a variety of experiences through economics, personal finance, sociology and psychology, as well as geography, which a lot of that has been added back into the standards, which has been a really good thing, political science, anthropology, and just history in general. And then there are two sections, ones on Constitution and Citizenship Day and Veterans Day. So according to federal law, that we are required as a district to offer educational opportunities each year on September seventeenth to commemorate the September seventeenth, seventy-eighty-seven signing of the U.S. Constitution. And then for Veterans Day, we are also required to provide at least one hour of class time or assembly time to study the United States Constitution and the Declaration of Independence. And they have chosen Veterans Day, November eleventh, for that hour of study to take place. And that also includes students being able to attend activities that honor veterans on that day, could be part of the instructional day. And then the last sentence there just allows parents and guardians to supply a request and writing if they would like their child to be excused from participation in activities.
Any questions there?
Often we get questions about, um, Veterans Day and why that's not a school holiday like some others are, but if you ever go watch one of our Veterans Day assemblies at our schools, you'll understand why students need to be in school on Veterans Day instead of out of school, because they learn so much when we have veterans come into the schools and talk to the students, and they, students get a chance to honor them. It's a, a good thing in schools.
And so we'll butt on those if our next meeting, yes, ma'am? All right, Mr. Handy.
Yes, um, we have recommendations from the State School Awards Association about safety plans and drills, and a lot of this we, we do, we do, there's a little bit of paperwork and things involved, uh, that come with it. But in the first section, it really talks about, uh, an assessment, and if you look under assessment, that, that second paragraph, it gives you specifics. We actually have a form that has thirty-three areas that we are to, um, check each month. Now, some of them, like the, the hoods in the cafeteria, we do in the summertime, and we have those inspected by a company, and, and so we mark those off. We, I've met with, uh, Mr. Alexander and that, and we're, we're looking at it, and we're dividing it up. Some will be done by, uh, some of his folks on a monthly basis. They already do some preventative maintenance work and that, that would fit in there. Some will be done by the facility specialists at the school. But typically, uh, those will be the, the folks doing most of this with the, the principal or the, whoever's over operations at the site overseeing it. But, um, it's part of that, the, the model fire and safety program guidelines, which are noted at the end as a legal reference. Fire inspections, we, we already have that. We have good relationships with our, our local fire and police and, and everybody, but, um, they come around and, uh, beginning of each year, they even come here, and they walk around and they, they check everything to make sure we're meeting all the, the codes and we're doing what we're supposed to, uh, as far as that goes. So I don't see that as a, a big change for us. We're already doing that, it's just putting an in writing. We do the, um, evacuation drills, and, uh, it'll talk about those in, in just a minute on, on the second page. It is allowing us to, um, if you go to page two, cut down the fire drills once this policy is put into play. We currently do one a month. You have to do one in the first ten days of school, obviously, so you can, uh, make sure that students are prepared. But once this goes into, um, policy, which hopefully will be November, if all things go well, um, it will change to one per semester. So we would do that one at the beginning of the year. Now you can do more if you need to, but the, the minimum requirement would be one per, per semester. And that will be the same thing with, uh, bad weather drills, whether it be tornado drill, whether it be earthquake and that. So you do one of those each semester, and we, we currently do that. So you do one of those each semester, and we currently do that. And then the same with the Code Red Active Shooter Intruder Drill, we call it Code Red Drill. We have two of those, we currently have two now, there's one per semester. Typically, the schools do the first one on their own, kind of, and talk through it. The second one has been a variety of things. We've gone in and brought somebody in to surprise them and see how they react, and we bring in our resource officers and local law enforcement. We have the person where a GoPro video camera, so we can see how people react and those kind of things. We haven't been able to do that because of COVID. We've kind of put that on hold. But they've been told that they have to do their first one with their staff and students first semester. They have a form they have to fill out and send to Ms. Hughes to make sure they document that. In this, it says, "The district will utilize a nationally recognized training method that will be conducted in a developmentally appropriate manner for all participants." We use kind of a combination. They mentioned one in particular, it's called Alice Training, I know you've probably heard of it, but they're all very similar, but we use one that was developed by Homeland Security and the FBI. They all involve around run, hide, or fight, or the three basic terms they use. So our program fits within that. And again, we're going to share at the principal's meeting on Wednesday, the form. Each teacher will actually have to fill it out, there's about four or five questions they have to answer every time we do one, and we'll document those to keep them. Classroom and hallway safety, you know, you don't have twenty percent of the hallway covered with paper because of fire rules. You don't have fifty percent of the classroom covered with paper. We typically don't have an issue with that because we have so much square footage, but we will remind our principals about that, because sometimes they do. And we were talking about it, maybe a high school's having something special with homecoming at a grade level. The seniors get this hallway to decorate, and they put up a lot of stuff and that. So we just remind them of that, but it's typically not a problem. And then we've also got to remind them and check on the things like the extension cords and the surge protectors and not plugging in the fragrance, you know, little lightbulb things and that, so all those are in there. And then, of course, construction renovation, we make sure that we follow all the standards. We have the fire marshal check on that, we have third-party folks that check on that to make sure that we're following the rules. We typically try not to do anything in the building when, you know, school's in session. But like at Sycamore High, we are doing some work on finishing up phase two, or we'll be finishing up phase two with HVAC, but it's, some is on the roof, some of it's on the backside, it's not in the building with kids, but it's on the campus, and we make sure that the folks there are doing what they're supposed to, our children are saying. Last part is just the legal references which caused these changes.
Any questions on any of that? All right, we'll be looking at those then to vote on at our next meeting. For our discussion items, again, that's all that we have tonight, and we will be looking at our policies next time. So if there's no objection, we'll go into executive session for personnel items, employment recommendations, and changes. All right, in executive session.